Exciting happen. Okay, this is a regular meeting of the Norwich Planning Commission. Get started here. We have an agenda on the table. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda and then we can discuss it?
Make the motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second. Okay, any discussion on the agenda?
I just want to make sure that, here's Bob walking in right now. I just want to make sure that all of the members received the sort of mid-afternoon email from me about the tier three rule-setting process and the draft rules.
Yep.
Yeah. Great.
And that'll, that will come up at least to, to point to at the, the first agenda item there to look at the Two Rivers hearing we had. Hi Bob.
How's it going?
Uh, okay. Um, how about a vote on the agenda? All those in favor?
Hi. Right.
All right, thank you. A public comment for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody in the room there? I can't see. Okay. Um, Mary, did you want to speak? No, okay. Um, all right, well, let's jump into the first item there and thi- this is really, um, this is just the first chance we get to talk about the Two Rivers hearing that we have or meeting that we had with Two Rivers about the future land use maps. Um, that we don't have, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Stephen, but we don't have any short-term uh, needs to, uh, address based on, on that key meeting. Um, but it certainly brought up some important topics about the regional situation, the, the housing allocations, the, the proposed land use, future land use map areas for higher density. So that whole, there were a lot of things bubbling around. So I, I just wanted to open up the floor to people um, for what they thought of the meeting and, uh, next steps. So if anybody had thoughts? You can get your mind back to when we did that, Bob?
Uh, I, I may tend to be off. I wanted to review this before I checked, uh, but the, uh, the proposed maps don't have to be in com- do, do they need to be in complete compliance with the, I said it in a way to phrase it. Um, but, uh, I, I guess to cut to, uh, what I was wondering about the, um, uh, if the, uh, the, the intermediate village designation, which escaped my mind right now, uh, that kind of enables a little more support from the state. Um, I, I guess, uh, if you can have a just reason to identify more space uh, as being in that category. Uh, I, I'm not sure why you wouldn't go that way if this isn't like a re, like the town is not redefining zones through this uh, layout that's in front of us. It's more of, of proposed use. Um, uh, you know, uh, I mean, you want to act in good faith and all that, but what is the downside to suggesting? Like many of these areas, like all the, uh, like, uh, you know, just basically a lot of the areas where talking or speculating on why they wouldn't have like a more village designation or the, the higher, higher tier, might not be the right term, but the higher tier village designation to enable more uh, support from the state.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that was part of the.
I might be Mr. Gumberg, I'm sorry, but, but that, that's kind of what I walked away with, uh.
Yeah, and, and I think Jeff Lubel said something about, you know, uh, leave your options open or, or keep your options open by, by having a, a a bigger footprint stated on the regional maps and then we are the ones, the town comes back and says either, hey, we want a a planning grant to do something with it and you have that side to it, or we want to do a tier one B designation in some subset of that. Uh, so, yep. Any other thoughts from people thinking back to that meeting? Christian?
Um, this is, I don't know if anyone's gone online, but are the Norwich map is updated now? Like it used to be like not in and now it's all filled in. I looked yesterday.
Oh, in the, I would assume that it's in the interactive, yeah, because.
Yeah, in the interactive.
And then you can click and comment.
Yeah, and so my, and it, we talked about this, I guess the only thing I took away from the meeting and then even more so when you look at the map is I would, it's seems silly to have the transition area on Route Five extends like ninety percent of the way to our current village center and village district, but not quite get there. And so if the plan is to extend stuff down that Route Five district, whether it be water or sewer or whatever, ends up sidewalks, whatever ends up being, it just seems foolish to have it get to within, I don't know, quarter mile or a third of a mile and then stop. So that infill of whether it's that Hobson Road to Route Five to Main Street like that, if that was all part of the village district, then we'd have one continuous area from the transition zone to the village district to the other transition zone down on River Road and so that was my only takeaway. And I, I'm not clear, other than putting a public comment in, I'm not clear how the planning commission gives that feedback.
I, I think we could write Two Rivers a letter. Stating that rationale and the request, you know, and it would be signed by the Chair of the Planning Commission. I think that would be effective.
Yeah, I, I just, I did want to correct myself actually relative to that because the, uh, to your point, Christian, the, the request, the short-term request from the Regional Commission was, once that map went active the day after the meeting, um, for people to go in and make freely make comments like, oh, boy, the, the agriculture zone should include that nice farm or that property is, you know, very specific, any kind of comments, including the one you're talking about. So whether the, whatever the planning commission chooses to do, uh, any individual on the planning commission or anybody in town can put a comment on that map. And they were definitely asking us to do that. Linda?
Hi, thank you. And I just wanted to follow up to Bob's question and I think I guess I'd like to um, maybe ask Stephen if he could comment on this because I have the same question as him. I also think that Christian's suggestion makes a lot of sense. And my question is, is, is there some kind of definition or a variety of definitions that the planning, the, the Two Rivers is following as they set out these maps that they, like if we, if we were to say, hey, make this section bigger, please, um, that they said, oh, I'm sorry, we can't do that. It's not allowed by the statutory definition or something like that? That's, I'm curious about that.
Yeah, my understanding, at least on one side of that, um, is i- it the other way, like they can't make it too small because they're required to have a credible story that the housing allocation for Norwich, the way it's put, the, a significant majority of the housing allocation for Norwich can fit within that village, uh, within the zone that's designated. And so if they came with a plan that had a tiny little district that couldn't fit that, uh, amount, then they would get pinged for that. I didn't hear anything in the conversation about, um, reasons you couldn't lean bigger. Stephen, did, is that?
Aside from, you know, generally preventing sprawl.
Right. If you say, we're just going to make it the whole town for the heck of it, leave our options open, then it would have a sprawl argument. Yep.
Yep. And Linda, um, to your request about methodology, if you look at our July eighteenth packet, there's, um, a document in there that is the methodology document for all of the planning areas, future planning areas, land use map, um, that sort of speaks to the statutory, you know, the enacting statute for that, uh, particular piece. So you, you can get it from there or, you know, just email me and I can send it to you directly. But there is a statutory basis for all of the categories.
Uh huh. So what do people, let's stick with, with Christian's comment or, uh, because I think that we could do one of several things. We could have individuals could go to the map and do whatever they want. That's, that's one kind of extreme. Or we as the planning commission could say, uh, here's what we propose and send a letter to, to Rivers. Um, or, or something in between. And I don't, you know, my concern or my, the other side is we've got a master plan grant that we're going to talk about. We've got obviously a, a bunch of planning work associated with housing and density and so forth. Um, for us with a little bit of conversation tonight to say, oh yeah, let's extend the village area to include those transition areas. It, it, we shouldn't do anything too hasty, but if we made it clear that that was simply, you know, being as open as possible on the first footprint so that in our planning activities, we can juggle it from there. Then I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have trouble with that. What do people think specifically about that proposal of? And, and we can, we don't need to pull up the map now, but yeah, we, clearly the, uh, the transition area that goes from the Hartford line um, down to that traffic light, I guess.
So that, and that's what's weird. It looks, it looks like it stops maybe like the co-op automotive. So it, it like gets close. It's just loop around the corner. Like, I mean, you're like within, I don't know, five hundred yards or something by the map.
And it would really just, well, I don't know. It would really just be the road in the sense that the brook creates a riparian break. Then there's actually protected land around the brook. And then you have the milk fry nature area on the other side and you have a bunch of sort of federal land where the highway is. So we're really talking about just the road corridor. Um, but that's to your point, a significant sec, because that's where water, sewer, sidewalks, you know, whatever bike lanes, whatever you might do to connect it together would fit in that road corridor.
I mean, I think we have a, a little bit of time yet before, you know, while they're still taking comment. So, um, you know, it, I think, you know, public comments on the, on the website are great. I, I think members should do that. But I, I'd also think that a letter from this body would carry a bit more, could possibly carry a bit more weight. If we were.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
So are, are people comfortable with that? Vince? You're muted.
You're muted.
It does include the co-op service center. So it's pretty much just that little strip right, uh, you know, X amount of feet each direction from the, where the, the, uh, ri- uh, river or creek or whatever that's considered right there is. But that seems to be the only buffer area. So I'm sure it has something to do with, with that, uh, body of water there, but it does include ever, everything else in the corridor.
It, yeah, does include like Route Five South from the entrance of town to the first light?
It, it doesn't include that roadway. No, that's a, that the area. So there is a part of the, of Route Five that is in, uh, I guess a different color, not pale yellow. That's not considered.
And then what about if, if we just started with the idea that, um, having those areas and we'll talk about the Route Five South in a minute, but having those areas contiguous makes sense. Now, then there's that area. Does it, does it include McKenna Road down to Lewiston?
No. Uh, that whole section of Main Street, it doesn't really include. It looks like the right side is some sort of, um, I'm not sure what light pink is here.
That's, that's village area.
Village area. On the right side of the Main Street going under the interstate is village area. On the left side is the pale yellow, which is what we're general.
Yeah, okay. So, so we're talking.
That's pretty much down to the river on the left side. Yeah.
So village and transition are the two. And we can confirm that, Stephen, but if those are, if those are comparable or equivalent in terms of what we're talking about, that the transition and village, then it's, uh, do we want to connect the dots so that that, the, that the Route Five South, which is sort of, you know, Willinghands, Leonard Cook's old property, um, Lewiston, uh, Route Five South into town and that village, that is a contiguous area to be explored at later times as a growth area.
Yeah.
Uh huh. So maybe Stephen, if, if you could, because I don't, I'm definitely not comfortable either writing a letter or signing a letter that just on the basis of, of this, but if, if, if you could uh, sort of draw what we're talking on the map and double check the timing with Two Rivers comments. And then if we can, uh, take one more look at it with something specific. So I could write a draft letter. You can put a map to it and we can bring it back to this group. And if we can do that and time to get to Two Rivers or even let them know that we're contemplating it so that uh, they hold, they hold the door open. Um, that might be a better way. I'd like to see it in a packet where, you know, maps, maps are touchy. Let's, if we can get it in the packet and get it warmed, then, then people, if people wanted to talk to it, they could come.
Yeah. And, you know, I see already, I'm, I'm looking at the Two Rivers, uh, online map and someone has already made the comment that.
These are all me, Stephen. There should be three in there and they're all me. So.
Okay, fantastic, fantastic.
Someone has already said the brilliant idea that Christian.
And just to summarize, so I put one comment on the transition area extending into town and I put two others on the village area. Basically, it, it's, I'm just curious, the reasoning and like just a little bit of for the Hawk Pine development, but basically those are areas that and the Hobson Road are areas that are like walkable to the village center. And by Norwich standards, fairly densely populated, like one acre or less lots and back to back to back to back. So I'm just curious as to how they.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I hear that. Um, okay. I think that, that's very doable.
Okay. Linda?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, I'm on the Two Rivers website and what's the quick way to find the map?
If you go to, um, the, their landing page, there's a
Yep.
There's a, there's a land use, um, but regional plan sort of call out at right at the top.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-six, right?
Yeah, twenty twenty-six regional plan.
Oh, okay.
Progress here if you follow that.
That's the new plan. The twenty twenty-six is the new plan rather than the current plan. Uh, and so that gets, that gets you to interactive.
And then scroll way to the bottom, Linda.
No, no, I found it. I just, I, I skipped from their homepage straight to like poking around under. It's like, you know, other, other tabs and stuff. So duh, that was wrong.
Yep. No, I've gotten lost on there before on like their current stuff rather than the future one. Is there, okay, so let's, I, I think that's all good stuff. Is there anything else? If, if we now put uh, a more pointed agenda item in our next meeting and get some background work done before that, is there anything else on this topic to bundle into that? That activity for the next meeting? Okay. All right, let's, let's start with that. I mean, we have time. We have time in the grand cycle of things. I think they don't finalize their, you know, our, our stuff until September or August next year, but there was one round of this feedback. Um, and I certainly would encourage everybody to go look at that because it's, it's, you know, back in the hinterlands, is there some designation that, that makes sense to change or look at the boundaries like Union Village, Beaver Meadow, you know, anything like that and see, are those, are those accurate? Okay. Okay. Well, let's, nothing else on that. Let's keep moving. We have a couple, several other big ones. Um, Enhanced Energy Plan. So I think I'm going to let Stephen give us an overview. And really the point here is, uh, we've agreed to take on this activity. We have, uh, the Solar Siding Subcommittee, we have this group. Uh, we have the Energy Committee and the Conservation Commission and really the question is, as you read through the specific sections of that, the document that needs to be created, who's doing what? Uh, and that's, that's the parsing out activity that would be good if, Stephen, we went through that in the Solar Siding Subcommittee and I think it'd be useful to do it for this group.
Yeah, let me, uh, share my screen. Um, you guys can all see my screen now.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
The Enhanced Energy Plan is conveniently broken into, uh, sort of three compact sections. Um, and I, I think, you know, we've talked about sort of carving out a, a, a group of, um, you know, planning mission members and members from other committees, including the Solar Siding Committee to sort of break this up and, you know, work in tandem on these various sections. So at our Solar Siding, uh, meeting, we discussed, you know, having the mapping section be within the sort of purview of that, um, that group. At, at least sort of the initial data collection, uh, you know, so that process is kind of underway. The, you know, the, the sort of next step would to be, would be to form, um, you know, a working group of uh, members from other committees, uh, to sort of come together and put together section, section one um, products, which are basically a data collection exercise, a lot of which, you know, I think is work's been done already, um, and, you know, would just have to be updated. I expect that we get some good participation from Harry Falconer over at, um, Two Rivers to assist us in this data collection process. Um, and then, you know, it all sort of comes together. You know, where you, you know, we take these ma- mapping exercises and the, the sort of citing requirements that the Solar Siding Group comes up with. Sorry, this is, this is, um, actually, sorry, I wanted to look at another section. Um, so the Solar Siding Group is working on the mapping and the pathway is standard nine, which sort of speaks to the you know, energy development and citing requirements of this plan. Um, you know, the processes are, you know, they, they kind of have to speak to all of, all of these items, nine A through nine G. Um, you know, in, in response to the mapping exercise, which really sort of lays out known constraints, possible constraints to get to, um, you know, sort of contin- continuing between sort of no-go areas and prime sighting areas. So that's a, you know, a fundamental component of, of the plan. Um, you know, I, I think tonight, you know, I'd sort of like to discuss the formation of this, you know, s- second group. Um, you know, and re- request sort of a, a motion from the board to invite other committees to participate in this process. Um,
Uh huh. Yeah, maybe let me, let me try. That's because I'm trying to get my head around this as well. And really, uh, the proposal that's come out of the conversations to date is we take this breakdown of, you know, everything that's needed for the Enhanced Energy Plan. And we're gonna parse it out into three, uh, three groups working on it. Solar Siding Subcommittee has a specific task, which is mapping, fi- finding places to, to put renewable energy that meet the generation targets, the maps that go along with that and the, uh, process and criteria that's used to evaluate projects. That's a charge to, that is their charge. Um, and then the proposal that Stephen's talking about, the second, the, the second group is the full planning commission. And then the third group is a, is a proposed, uh, new group that is responsible and that works with, can you have Harry Falconer as, as staff help? Um, but takes on chunks of, of all of this, uh, section one and then a couple of pieces of, of the pathways. And that would be, uh, a planning commission, uh, representatives, uh, energy committee, conservation commission. Um, and that group would have a charge from the planning commission and then the planning commission would roll it all together and kind of tie all that together. The advantage to that proposal is that if the working group, whatever you want to call it, this, this group to set up Enhanced Energy Plan Working Group. Um, if it is made up of members of standing committees, energy, conservation, so on. Those members have already been appointed by the Select Board. So we can avoid any kind of bother with, are we allowed to make a subcommittee, so on and so on? We can say, these are people that have already been appointed to do the town's business on these topics. So we are asking them to help us do the Enhanced Energy Plan. Um, so I think that's, that's what Stephen is proposing, that we convene a, a planning commission, Enhanced Energy Plan Working Group and that we request, uh, the Energy Committee and the Conservation Commission and question to the group whether we would ask for, uh, a rep or participation from Historic Preservation or any other groups. Um, does that, is that at least clear as a proposal to people? Any
Clear to me.
Thoughts on that? Um, and remember, we of course would need some planning commission reps, one or two, and three of us are already on the Solar Siding Subcommittee. So we're gonna, we're gonna have members if we, uh.
Uh, I mean, we, we could just do it with, you know, members of the Energy Committee, members of the Conservation Committee and myself and Harry as staff.
Uh huh.
You know, I know there's, um, you know, there's limited time in this volunteer position and I know some members are committed to other, um, you know, things right now.
So can I ask, uh, Energy Committee reps that are here, uh, yeah, what kind of bandwidth uh, you would have, uh, for such a project? I mean, I, I do think to Stephen's point, we, we have two staff members. We're going to lean on them and use them. Um, and so, uh, does the Energy Committee have uh, time to put into the pieces of this?
Um, I'll, I'll pipe up here. I'm the only person from the Energy Committee who's attending tonight. Um, and I would hope so. I think that the only way to know is to contact the Energy Committee and ha- have us have a discussion at our next meeting. Um, and so I think that would be the approach to go and you'd find out, like, you have to specify, are you looking for, uh, you know, are you looking for one person or are you looking for two, the, it's simpler to find one person. On the other hand, it's like a second person is kind of an alternate, a backup, and so that could be helpful to keep things moving. Um, but so the only way to, to know is to, is to put the request to each of the committees involved.
Yep.
Yeah.
And you, you know, Stephen, you know for a fact that we have Harry's time?
Yeah, he's, he's called me to offer it several times. So that's, that's for certain. You know, and conceivably, we could, you know, have one or two members of the Energy Committee and then, you know, also discuss these topics at Energy Committee meetings.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to kind of get the right balance between setting up different groups and separate groups and, uh, and just making monthly meetings. But I do think the difference here is if we have, uh, you, Stephen and Harry to, to do some legwork, then, yeah, and we can get one or two Energy Committee members, uh, then we should be able to pull together a lot of, a lot of stuff in a limited amount of time in full meetings.
Yeah. I think so.
Okay.
So, Ly- Lynda, you, you suggest that we ask the Enhanced Energy Committee?
The Energy Committee, yeah. So if we, we can specify exactly which pieces we're talking about.
Yeah.
Then we would, the Planning Commission is working on the Enhanced Energy Committee and we ask for the participation and, and assistance of uh, the Energy Committee, uh, with a focus on these areas uh, to assist in that and work with staff. Uh, and then we can do the same thing with the Conservation Commission. And, uh, you know, I think in terms of public participation, the whole idea is that that every, and those are the focus groups that really need to be included. And then anybody else that's interested is, you know, these are going to be warranted meetings and, and conversations that people could come and chime in.
Yeah, I, I, I think we, we left one pathway standard within the sort of Planning Commission, uh, group. So, you know, I think a- as we sort of collect all these pieces together, we could hold, you know, in a public meeting, you know, solicit public testimony.
Well, yeah, I, I thought, I thought the one, the land use one was appropriate to keep within the full PC. That seemed to be the bread and butter of the PC is land use. I wouldn't, I wouldn't sub out a land use discussion, uh, from this group. Lynda?
Um, thanks. I, I think it would be helpful if you're moving toward the point of getting ready, uh, to make a request to other town committees like Energy and Conservation, um, that it would be good to identify, uh, the timeframe in which you hope to operate, you know, so it's like, oh, this is a a couple of months worth, this is like a, a, a three month long duration or something like that. And then how many, like a minimum number and maximum number. It sounds like minimum is one and maximum would be two. And if you, you probably can't guess ahead of time, but like if, if meetings would end up, i- if you can gauge like when they might happen or whether they would be, whether it'd be fine to have them happen all by Zoom, like I think people are getting comfortable with that and if if they, and that makes it easy because you don't have to work in travel time and if you're, yeah, so anyway, so include, with your request, include those kinds of logistical considerations.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, that's good. And I think that, yeah, the idea would be that, you know, Stephen can be the point person. So instead of this revolving around PC meetings, if it's set up a meeting of this group and it's Zoom only and it's in its, you know, three or four people, um, then, uh, that can be pretty flexible and, and gets warned, but it can be easier to do. Okay.
Yeah.
So can we get a motion? We are, we decided already, yes, we're doing the Enhanced Energy Plan. That's, that's a done deal. Can we get a motion of the group to uh, make a formal request to the Energy Committee and the Conservation Commission to, uh, participate in this activity and to assign a representative if they choose to to help with these specific parts of it?
Make your motion for, for, would you, would this be a Stephen to reach out to them or just our own committee sending out requests? I'm not sure how to phrase it.
I would say be the chair to invite or the Planning Commission itself, uh, does it. Stephen can organize the meetings, but the request should come from this group or the chair.
I guess a motion for the, uh, make a motion for the, uh, the, uh, Chair to, uh, submit requests to the appropriate committees within Norwich to participate in, uh, uh, the Enhanced Energy Plan development contribution.
I'll second that.
All right. Any other comments on that? Um, I mean, before we vote on? Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Fine.
All right, thank you. Um, I do think Stephen and maybe we can, we can touch base afterwards because I think this points about timeframe and expectations and specifically how we spell out what we're asking, uh, for help with. Um, let's be short and pithy about it, but say this, and this is the timeframe and get Harry involved and, and really uh, eyeing what we're talking about.
Yeah. I'll, I'll reach out to Harry some, you know, early tomorrow to get a sense of his availability and we can talk after that.
Okay, and then I can, I can craft a little draft message and we can fill in the, the content of which sections we're talking about. All right, great. Good stuff. And then we'll wrap that back around. The Solar Siding Subcommittee will continue to do its thing uh, on the sections. We have a mapping exercise going on and, and that's, that's moving forward. Okay, so one thing we definitely have next on the agenda that is time sensitive is the planning grant application. And so, uh, I would, I would put my question out and, and I know you were scrambling to get a bunch of stuff done for this meeting, Stephen, and so, and I was looking through that and the short-term rental things. And I'm just, um, one thing I had when I read through it was it, it sounded like we were talking about the whole town. There was sort of one line in there or a couple of lines that said, focus on the village area or something like that, but in our meeting, in our last meeting, um, it, it sounded to me like it was much more focused on, on the, on the village. And the application didn't quite read that way. I don't know if people got the same feeling. Vince?
Uh, yes, I, I think it was good overall and like you're saying on Echo, what you're saying, that it should be a little more focused on the village like we talked about. Even down to the name of what it, what it is. I think it's called, is it the Town Master Plan? And I thought that could potentially be confused with redeveloping our town plan. So if there could be some branding, uh, tweaks there to make it, I know we, we talked about expanding it, not just in the village, but down to, uh, the down Route Five something too. So I know that we can't just say village center or something like that, but, uh, yeah, if we could change the, we could kind of change it to focus on that area also.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, often these plans, they're either townwide or, you know, they come with a study area. So I think, um, pulling, pulling out the, you know, the village area, um, in, in the text is, is important, making clear the study area. So I'm happy to do that. Um, just, just, just in terms of, um, you know, next steps and, you know, this work in progress. At this point, you know, our, our next step would be to get a, um, you know, this municipal resolution in place. And to do that, I'm going to prepare sort of an executive summary of, you know, the master plan project, drawing from the document. So I, I think there, you know, there is still time between now and November third, when the, these are due, um, to, you know, refine the language, rebrand it a little bit, but the, you know, the sort of core effort right now is, you know, coming up with, you know, concise, punchy executive summary to present to the Select Board and the, you know, that the members have consensus for, um, you know, in order to uh, get the municipal resolution.
What's the, uh, timing? So the Select Board meeting that we have to hit is?
It's, they're, they're setting the agenda tomorrow.
All right, so for the twenty, for the twenty-second.
Yeah.
So we need to, we need to get them to say, yeah, we'd be willing to approve four or five thousand bucks, Matt, for the 10% and this sounds like something worth doing on the twenty-second.
Yeah, yeah, that, it has support of the Chair of the Planning Commission, the Town Administrator. And, you know, we've identified someone who's going to administer the grant and is going to, um, you know, and all the Select Board members sign the resolution. But that's gotta, you know, that's gotta sort of happen tomorrow. In order to get on the agenda.
Yeah, then the packet.
Yeah, so what I'm pro- would propose, um, is to, you know, you, using parts of this, probably, um, most of section two point one as a sort of executive summary of the project. I see here that, um, you know, may- maybe we, you know, in this, we can call out the, the study area a bit more. Um, and, you know, I just want to make sure that we have consensus on the, you know, the, the project deliverables are going to focus on land use, housing, transportation, infrastructure, natural resource protection and climate resilience. That is sort of these, the, and th- those would sort of serve as the, um, you know, chapters, so to speak, in the master plan. So maybe we want to, you know, apply some thought to those topics.
Yeah, so can you, it sounded like last time when you talked about this, that um, the master planning exercise is, is kind of a known animal to, to people that, that this is, um, this activity has expectations and, and kind of standard methods and so forth. And, and I've never done one before and I don't know, you know, what other people's experiences are, but, um, can you help us out a little bit in terms of if it looks, it looks new and sort of not all that well defined to me. Uh, but is it clear to one skilled in the art, so to speak?
You know, I, I, I think this application looks, you know, very similar to master plan applications that I've seen before and that have been successful. Um, and, you know, generally they do sort of concentrate on, you know, sort of general planning topics. Um, you know, in a focused study area. So I think, you know, in terms, in terms of our application, I, you know, I think, I think it's pretty solid.
Christian. Um, I was just gonna say, what I drew on partially was the examples, is the process, as I understood it, was that the master plan is basically like what, being inclusive and giving a community sense of like, where do we want to go? Like, so it's, it's not like how we a- actually change zoning rules or planning or whatever. It's just like, do we want to expand? Do you want to expand in this area? Do we want to have a bigger downtown? Do we want to do sewer and walk? Like, like what are the major issues for the next like five to 10 years that inform the town plan, which has more detail, like this is how we will do in order to address residential housing or increase, we will do X, Y, and Z. So this should really just be like a high level survey of like the three or four things that people care the most about. Um, and then I added the climate resiliency because every single application that was funded last year that I saw at that, as a to- topic area, I don't know, like how, it's not something we've talked about a lot in this group, but it seems to be pretty pointed and like what they, the state is caring about.
Yeah. I traditionally spend, you know, for flood prone areas, but we're now in a drought prone area. Um, so I think it's, it's, it's relevant.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, and I agree, you said something, I think, Stephen, when we were talking earlier, um, that one of the, to Christian's point, one of the main functions, purposes here is public input, public participation. You know, you're gonna get a consultant to help you, you're gonna do a survey, you're gonna beat the bushes, you're really, again, I'm gonna have some public meetings to try and draw out.
Yeah.
So that, that to me is a good, a good, simple statement of what one of the major activities. Um, and I think, but to what we were just talking about with the transition areas and making that contiguous and so forth, that that feels similar, you know, it, or it feels good to put those together to say, hey, we're talking about future land use and we're talking about this map here that connects these areas around the village as, as warranting some attention. Some attention and some town conversation.
Yeah.
You know, you got the farmer's market, you basically go from the farmer's market to, to the Grange, down to Willing Hands and Lewiston and McKenna Road, people are talking about McKenna Road, about short-term rent. I mean, there's a lot of uh, moving parts in that area of town.
Mm-hmm.
So we're proposing to get, uh, some grant help, to get some people's time to help us as a town. Think about that topic.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I think that's a s- solid point and, um, so, you know, my proposal for, you know, tomorrow's document would be to take this project description section, um, you know, make clear the study area that we're wanting to focus on and really emphasize the value of the public outreach process. Which we talked to later in the, the application, but I'll, you know, in this executive summary, I'll just bring that more forward.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Did you want to say something, Matt?
Yeah, um, depending on how you're defining climate resiliency, I think that that is, uh, is an important topic. Uh, from the sort of public safety point of view and just the general citizen's point of view. If you look at the past, I don't know, X number of years when we've had really heavy rainstorms recently, even in the past year, you know, we've blown out certain roads and had to go and then repair, make costly repairs or, you know, Hemlock Road is, is the extreme example, but, but there are other examples as well. I think the rule of thumb for, you know, environmental scientists is that it takes, uh, about five times as much money to repair a climate damage that, that's caused by, you know, storms versus, you know, uh, one times that to, you know, stay ahead of things. And so, you know, I don't want to, you know, I'm, I'm not being alarmist. And so, you know, I don't want to, you know, I'm, I'm not being alarmist, but, but even though we're not in flood areas, when our, uh, most of the culverts that we have right now are fairly undersized compared to the ways that they upsize, that they changed the regulations after Irene. And so, you know, replacing those culverts so that we don't have to repair roads, you know, every time it, we have a, we have a real big storm would be helpful. I don't know if it fits into the master, this master plan, you know, um, much larger, you know, look at things, but, but it certainly needs to factor in somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, the current conditions is the fact that, you know, the flood plain runs through the village or near to the village.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's flood plain and then, you know, I do think that the, the flood plain and blood brook coming through there is one thing. And then the village, but you, you could say, okay, the village area and the transition areas we're talking about are relatively flat. Um, in terms of intense stormwater drainage, but clearly the town plan. Cause everything, everything we're doing is gonna feed into redoing the town plan over the next couple of years here. And clearly that, when you start going out every one of the fingers of the Norwich roads, where you get very steep and small culverts, um, it, it may not be as much of an issue in the core village. But it sure as heck needs to be on the list um as you go out all the roads.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I, I had, I had a, I drew back my focus away from the village and you're totally right.
No, I think, I mean, we just, we, we have a parking lot or we have a list that, that has to be included and up, and it's a good point to say. This is i- in terms of updating the town plan, you know, the energy plan is one. Uh, and actually, so the other thing I wanted to tie together into this is the capital planning. So there was a very good conversation in the select board meeting, I'm sorry I missed that, Matt, but the, on Tracy Hall and capital planning. Um, and this group has made a commitment to do the capital planning that is appropriate for the planning commission to do. Which starts with the utility and facilities plan. Which is, among other things, the infrastructure of water and potentially sewer, all town buildings, uh sidewalks, you know, that kind of infrastructure, inventory, desired uh goals and how you're going to pay for it and when. And so that is gonna dovetail in with the, the master plan grant activity. Uh, with, you know, a Tracy Hall conversation about how Tracy Hall relates to the Grange and relates to everything else. So I'm, I'm trying to avoid there being like five separate topics going on when actually they're quite interrelated. And if we can think about them well, we can unify rather than fragment. But I think, so that's, that's another message out of the master plan. It's, it's not like, oh, what are you doing this master planning grant for? Uh, there are all these other things going on. It's like, well, it's to help make sense of the other things and get town participation and so on.
May- maybe in the, this, maybe in our application, you know, we need to call out sort of as a catalyst for, um, you know, for this project. Is the sort of revisiting exercise that's happening around the center of government.
Yeah, yeah, call it out and say the town, you know, that is the core of the village area. Throw in the, the farmer's market. I mean, there is a, a permit application at the DRB in two days for a large popular activity that's out at one end of the zone we're talking about.
Yeah.
And so there are a lot of, there, there have been specific conversations in this group about land uses on McKenna Road, which is basically smack dab in that area. So there, there's some things that drive the reason we would want to talk about this and dig into it.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if, if right now the application does enough to sort of emphasize the, you know, importance of the historical nature of the village of Norwich. I mean, just in turn, you know, the historical society is a, you know, very active. This, you know, historical society. And I'm sure that they have um their own vision of what the, the village should look like. So, you know, sort of playing to bo- both, you know, sort of forces to maintain status quo versus, you know, forces to uh change. That, that's a sort of dynamic that we could e- explore. And if that makes sense, I can, you know, try to pull that out a bit more in um the executive summary that I'm going to prepare for tomorrow.
Mm-hmm. People? You know, I think it makes sense that, cause the concern would be, oh wait, you've got this cute historic village center that we all know and love. The two things you're talking about, Route Five North, Route Five South, transition areas, have a totally different character. And if we glom them all together, we're gonna lose the, the, the core historic. Uh, and so we need to be upfront and, and really talk about that.
Yeah. Um.
My only thing, Stephen, is like the application itself is like very small segmented, I don't know, very strict character counts. So like further down, there's things like product ur- urgency and need, and I think that is a lot of the language you're talking, you're looking for in executive summary.
Yeah, I.
It's just like buried in like, I don't know, three point something or whatever, but it's down there.
Yeah, four point one. Yeah, I, exactly. Uh, I, I was, you know, planning on including pieces throughout the application in the executive summary. But so that, you know, that's sort of, we gotta have the municipal resolution signed off on at the next select board meeting, if possible. And in order to do that, at this point, we don't need to have a complete application ready to put up. We just have to have a, a, you know, something that can communicate clearly, simply, you know, what the goal, intent and purpose is of, you know, this planning project. And the select, I mean, the select board doesn't even have to pay for it. My department's got funds set aside to cover the match. So it should be pretty straightforward. Um.
Mm-hmm. So, but is it true? Uh, so November third is the date for submission?
Mm-hmm.
But we're not planning another PC meeting before that, so it means after tonight, um, we would need to empower uh either you or you and, and somebody else to dot the i's, cross the t's, get it uh sent over. We're not gonna.
I mean, at, at the last, last meeting, we had a motion, you know, from the planning commission, you know, for, you know, me, I think to write the application.
Right. So we, we got that and we're in decent shape where we are, but, but we're talking about editing it. And I'm just asking the group what the comfort level is with um an application being submitted from this group without us seeing it again and, and what do you need to feel comfortable? Christian's okay with it. Cause we're probably gonna ask him to help Steve and finish it anyway, so.
I'm also happy to pass that duty off if somebody else wants to have finalized and make sure it all, I'm happy to pass that off.
And that'd be, I mean, I can absolutely share it with everybody before, you know, before we launch it. Um.
So you're saying this will be the last time that we'd get a chance to see it?
No, no, I would.
It's, the last time we are, have a planned meeting before it must be submitted.
Yeah, okay.
Can't do group edit on a document. You know, we, we could do a hub and spoke a little bit where if we said, all right, we empower Stephen and Christian to put in the kind of things we've been talking about, they'll send it out to this group. If anybody has specific comments, they can go back to just Stephen. And as long as that doesn't turn into a back and forth, back and forth. Um, we're not meeting about it, we're just throwing in some edits and empowering Stephen to compile the edits.
And so, yeah, absolutely, we can, you know, I'll would distribute the, the final version, a draft version prior to posting. I guess the point I wanted to make is that I don't believe that the board itself, aside from, you know, tonight's motion to authorize Yon to sign the um, uh, uh, r- resolution. Yeah, the board doesn't have to take any further action.
Okay. Any other thoughts just on the, on the content or the focus or, or presentation of it? Okay. So is the group uh in agreement with that proposal that we would? Uh, we've given suggestions, little change of emphasis, uh, and to mostly Stephen, but I would ask Christian to stay involved um to draft it. So clearly tomorrow is the key in terms of a time crunch to the select board. Um, I will go to the select board meeting, maybe if, if Christian you could, or Stephen will be there. Um, but so that we can answer questions, I, I hope it would be pretty straightforward. Um, and then a draft will go out to the whole group. Relatively minor edits or suggestions would be fed back to Stephen. And that would be ready to go. No more discussion by this group. Is everybody comfortable with that? Okay, so you need a motion specifically, Stephen, to, to have me sign the application.
Yeah. Um, yeah, and the instruction reads, the Chair of the Planning Commission must also sign the resolution upon endorsement by vote of the Planning Commission. So the motion could be, you know, we endorse or authorize the Chair to.
We can do that now?
Yeah. Yeah. Go for it.
What, what were you saying?
Go for it, Ernie.
Okay, I was gonna say, I, I want to make a motion to authorize um the Chair of the Planning Commission, Yan, uh, a spear to uh sign um sign this document when it's generated.
Great.
Number seven? All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion?
I am.
All right.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, holler, holler in the morning if you have any questions, Stephen, but I, I'll assume you'll get enough together to get it into their packet and then we'll talk about it with them on, on the twenty second.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Great, thank you.
Short term rental. I thought, I, I've had feedback from several people that, that thought uh last, last time that our meeting on this topic was appreciated and timely and uh people felt that it was a good start to the conversation, so um the idea is to continue that. Um, the, in the packet is a draft. Uh, just some draft language, I just want to be clear. As far as I'm concerned, that's, that is draft language to help us think about this and have the next step in the conversation. It's definitely not draft language to nitpick a definition or something, that's not the stage we're at. It's to kind of get our heads all around the topic. And I, I guess what I'd ask the group, based on what we heard from townspeople uh and, and ourselves in that last meeting, is what, what are our goals? What problem are we trying to solve? Uh, what, you know, what definitions distinguishing characteristics are worth? You know, what's the difference between long term rental, short term rental, in which zones? What needs a permit, what doesn't, you know, what are we trying to do? Because if, if we don't have that on the table and agreed upon, then the wording of the resol- of the bylaws premature. What did, what did, where did people end up after that meeting, Ernie?
Well, I mean, it, 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 when I first heard about this and at the last meeting, it seemed like that uh we were, it, I, I just, in my mind, it was just a whole lot of different, different people had different problems with short term rental. And I'm not sure I feel like this, how, what to even be focusing on yet. To make it so that it's something that works for the town, not just trying to pick from these different complaints we heard the last time. So I, I don't really know how to go about that, that problem either, uh, how, how, how to resolve that either, so. Um, I mean, I think the first thing is, how, how do we, how do we, how do we choose what, what sort of, what we're gonna focus on there? I mean, what are we, what are we trying to achieve too? That's the other thing is, I mean, people had complaints, for instance, about one place. Uh, other people were saying, oh, no, it works nicely in, in their view, they've seen other people doing it, it works okay. And so I'm not really sure what the problem is yet even.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I think an important thing is, is right now our regulations are absolutely silent on short term regulations. Um, though we do have a clause that states if there is a use that's not explicitly by right or conditional is, is prohibited. So when people ask me, what about short term, you know, can I create a short term rental with this? My answer is no. But the remedy for these existing ones is pretty weak. You know, to rely on that, that article. I mean, I, I don't think that would stand up in the court if I, you know, was asked to enforce, say, this issue on the kind of rug. So.
Can it, does, are we, does, do our options span from um um forbidding it under all circumstances to it permitting it under all circumstances and everything in between, or do we have some place to start where there's some constraints?
Um, I mean, I think there's some established constraints by other municipalities that um, you know, have dealt with this issue. I mean, on the face of it, in re- you know, relation to other parts of the state, Norwich has not really a significant issue. But it is a use. I mean, we had members of the public say that there, you know, up to fourteen and maybe more already. So we have a use that's existing in town outside of our regulations. Um, and.
Do they want more of it, or do we not want more of it? Also, I mean, that's, that's something also, I mean, that's even more what I'm, because I, what you're talking about is actually fairly well delineated, it's fourteen or even whatever number it actually is, or it does sound familiar. But I mean, it's a relatively small, small group. And it, you know, I mean, we could continue what we're doing now and wait until somebody actually has a complaint or somebody brings a suit to some, on somebody. Yeah, to have, and then let the court make a definite, some definitions for us.
Well, there, I mean, there are definitions.
Let's just be clear, we have a, we have a complaint or we have a custom, a, a resident. Uh, you know, we have a letter in our packet in the last meeting from Anna Road residents, and we have public testimony from our last meeting where people said, hey, and we have a letter from Chris Katokey that says this, your bylaws don't allow this. So, so we have been put on notice that something's happening in town that is not, not allowed. And so I think that to me is a problem to be solved right off the bat. Doesn't tell us which direction to go, it's a problem to be solved. Christian?
Yeah.
I, I was just, back to Ernie's first question, I think, yeah, my understanding, yes, is, Ernie, we can lean into it and make it an allowed use. Or we can limit it at whatever level we want to. Or we can limit it at whatever level we want to, and I mean, like, people have varying opinions on that, but like, I think that's. The discussion is like, it could. I mean, there are some limits to it already, like, there's noise ordinances in town that can be enforced, there's septic. Parking, I mean, there's like already some of that in place, so like. If somebody was having forty people in a three bedroom, like, they're already violating other issues. But as far as leaning into yes or no on rentals, I think we could go anywhere on the spectrum.
It might be used, I think it'd be useful to bound for ourselves right now. It'd be useful to to bound it a little bit, right, to say, because I don't think, for example, just throw an example, if we. Throw some use cases on the on the ground here and see where where the boundaries, where the fuzzy boundary is. You know, lo- long term rentals of a house or an apartment. Long term has a definition that's, you know, that we picture. Some number of months to a year at a time lease, a long term rental of a whole house or an apartment or a condo. I don't think. Well, we've we've heard anything that that's a problem that needs extra regulation. It doesn't eat into workforce housing, you know, and so on. So, okay, that's in the category of, we're not gonna. Rattle any cages on that. Um, then I think where it got fuzzy and interesting in the discussion was owner occupied. Versus investor owned property. Ways to do definitions about primary residences and things like that. But but that's, that I think is a distinction to say. Okay, because the McKenna Road one was the one that that everybody kind of said, wait a minute, that doesn't sound right. Someone's buying a property and then another with the express purpose of full time, short term rental. And. What, so that, that's, I think, the a use case we wanna talk about very specifically, and then to. To the point, okay, what can we do about it? And that's where I think the the stuff Stephen wrote down is just a helpful set of guidelines. You can, for example, make it a condition, make that a conditional use. Um, and all that does is it gives the DRB the ability, you need a permit. The DRB gets to review everything from character of the neighborhood to traffic. To site plan and so on, it's, it's still perfectly possible that it could happen. And it could happen in various places in town. But it would get reviewed. So, I mean, that that's to me, as we thought through this, those were the kind of the places where we were hitting. The fuzzy boundaries to talk about and decide on.
Yeah.
What, I mean, what do people, in terms of the owner occupied, and I and I went back with Stephen just on this because the question was. Picture somebody, and this is another use case, perfectly imaginable. It's their primary residence, they live there seven months a year. And then they go south for five months. And they rent it, but instead of doing a five month rental. They do a series of. Airbnbs for five months. Is that a use case that we wanna regulate or simply allow? And that to me is falls on either side of that line, but Christian, do you have a point?
I mean, I I'll just say, like, I, as general rule, I think owner occupied is one of the stronger tools from what I. And I said this last time, I've been able to tell, I saw, I'm a big proponent of that, I don't particularly like the definition in the packet. Um, specifically like the owner's primary Vermont residence, I think adds. Unnecessary confusion, like, I know we don't wanna get any gritty, but like, it shouldn't matter if they have. Like, it's their primary tax residence, like, wherever they get one of them anywhere in the country, and it's. If their primary one sixty, their hundred and eighty one days or hundred and thirty three days, or whatever it is, is here, then that's primary. The only other question I have is, the other op way people, a lot of people do it that I know is Dartmouth graduation, there's a lot of people in town. People wanna rent out their house, it's owner occupied. Fifty one weeks a year, and then one week a year, they wanna get out and leave and rent it. Owner occupied by all definition, but. Like, no one's on site to manage guests, like, the last week or last meeting, people were talking about. Um, people being on site when they're, we're renting it, and so I know that's another way you can go. Um, but that would, if you have to be on site, the owner that precludes, like, I have one house, one building, if I, I can't rent it out then.
Yeah.
Well, well, question I, it just occurs to me is, is it appropriate for us to sort of start thinking maybe first of. Of what the problems that we want to 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 solve, I mean, one of the problems that I picked up on last time. Was how at least investor owned. Um, housing of this sort has a tendency to raise the prices of property nearby. Um, and in a town like Norwich, being a listener, I certainly say, that's a really bad thing to happen in this town. Um, not not the investor own aspect itself, but the just more pressure to raise prices in this town. Um, when we're trying to get affordable housing in here particularly, so, um. To me, that looks like one problem to be solved. I don't know if that is feasible, but I'm just saying, that looks like a problem to be addressed. Um, and maybe there are others too that we can identify and address. Or or identify, and then we can address them once we've got them sort of, you know, corralled. We got the problems corralled, and and then we can start addressing them and start. Looking at how these problems interact with each other or our solutions to them interact with each other, so that, you know, we don't make a passion of it.
You know, the these proposed uh, uh, rental requirements. Uh, that sort of collated from a number of different, um. You know, municipalities, and then I, you know, I I really tried to make sure they spoke to all of the potential issues. Yeah, I I don't, I don't know if we can do anything to control price inflation. If a property has a, you know, ADU that can be rented. I mean, a realtor is gonna always push that. So that's, you know, I don't think that's within our ability to, you know, to regulate.
Well, that's, that's, that's what I'm getting at, is can, what, first of all, what can we deal with?
Well, we can, we can ensure that there are no adverse outcomes. To having an Airbnb in, you know, in your neighborhood. So, you know. We make sure that it's clear that the owner of the property is responsible for, you know, renter is complying with noise ordinance. You know, that we limit the occupancy based on the wastewater container, that there is ample parking. Um, and no one's parking in shared driveways or in the town's right of way to make use of the Airbnb. Or whatever you want to call it. Um, so I mean, the the requirements really try to head all of that, those issues off that. You know, came up.
I I, when when I think of that, I'm thinking, for instance, when um. Linda and Rocco, the Dante's were talking about. You know, that they were, they were horrified by, sounded to me like they were horrified by. Um, the two investor owned properties and and what was going on there, um, so what it sounds like to me is that. We might not be able to in any way control who buys the property at all, but we can say. There are all these regulations that anyone who does this kind of uses the property this way has to comply with those. Do I understand what you said?
Yeah, that's, that's the idea.
Some of these things could be.
Well, I just wanted to clarify, you know, when we think about our options or our remedies. If we have something that's, now we don't call it out, so we basically have no handle on this. Um, if we called it out and for some subset of it. The owner occupied or whatever, we called it out as allowed, permitted use in in all districts or whatever. Um. We still get to put potential conditions on there, they're not, they're not conditional, meaning you might not be allowed to do it. But there would be some rules you had to follow. So we could allow, it is allowed in these districts, this defined use is allowed in these districts. And here are the conditions, the things that are listed, you know, the contact information has to be available, the occupancy, the parking, that's. Now we have a handle on it. And then if you have some other ones, like, uh. Whether it's offsite owner or not, or investor owned, or not owner occupied. Where it's a conditional use. Now you have conditions that you can put on, rules. And there's also a potential that they simply don't get a permit, that the DRB would say, no. And that, that to me, that changes, so that's, that option. Makes it so that if if you had that. For some subset of this, you had it conditional. Permit required. Then if I'm coming to Norwich and looking to buy a property. And that's what I wanna do with it. I just have a little, if there's an uncertainty, there's a worry, I'm not gonna buy a property planning to do that with it. If I'm not sure I'm gonna get a permit. So it it, in just that way discourages that use a little bit. And then the DRB gets to make specific.
I mean, I mean, to me, that's a good way to do it, I mean, part of what I'm trying to do right now is just sort of start. Logically, you know, sometimes, when when, having been on this. Committee for a while, sometimes we have a great idea, like, doing something like this, and then it gets kind of. Scattered, and I'm kind of hoping that by asking some questions, I can help keep it sort of focused. Not focus, that's not the right word, but help help it stay sort of orderly. Um, so that we can accomplish it. I mean, I haven't gotten a chance to really read these, the the this, you know, proposal stuff here yet, so I can't, it might even answered my questions, but. I also think it's good to talk about it, even if I had read it.
Yeah, well, like I said, the idea for that write up was to give us the things to think about, what might you put on for conditions? Uh, what might the definitions be that would clarify what matters? Christian?
Um, so I'm the, uh, in section A of what Stephen's shared, um. The first part, like, short term rental owner occupied, cleaning up the definition of owner occupied, but permitted use in all districts, like, I'm in fa- I'm. A fan of that. I I guess, like, I don't see the need to do the non owner occupied and the conditional use in the DRB, it just seems like. I don't know, it just seems like opening up the door to, like, if if the goal is, I don't know, I I guess I just don't see a need to. Do that, but I'm open to, if someone can point to a strong reason, and then, uh, the last thing, Stephen, is, um. I, other towns have started doing this, and I'm a, would suggest we do the same if this is something we think is gonna increase. Is rather than to, is is to make a registry of them, so people have to register them with Town Hall.
Yeah.
So we have a record of, like, are these at fourteen, thirty, fifty, seventy, so. Three or five years from now, we come back to this group to talk about it, we have some sort of sense of what that is.
Yeah, and Ernie, just, if I could just react to that quickly, um, yeah, I I. I think we can remove Vermont, primary Vermont residents from the owner occupied definition, um. You know, there's a very easy way to understand if some a property is owner occupied by their homestead declaration. So, you know, that that criteria will be a requirement to demonstrate that it is owner occupied or not. Um. I think. You know, to your point about the development review board, my argument there would be it is an opportunity for. Abutting neighbors to participate in the process. Which they're not allowed to, they don't really have the opportunity to do in the case of a building permit. So if I issue a building permit, there's a fifteen day appeal period where someone can appeal. You know, my decision to issue that building permit. Um. And, you know, it's, I, if it's a by right use, there's really no way to, uh, there's no remedy. To, um, you know, to change that, they can always, you know, they'll appeal my decision to the DRB. If the DRB upholds my decision, which they should, because I have a right to issue that building permit. Their their only recourse is to, um, you know, take it to the environmental court. And it's a.
So Stephen, um, if we just take the track for a minute, that that some, some defined use. Uh. We say, yes, we want to have, make it conditional so the DRB has that. Hook in there and can can look at things. Then the ordinance would also specify what they're looking at. Right, I mean, it, I know that we said something about character of the neighborhood in the past discussion. And plan review, which has a list of things about traffic and and so forth, but. How much leeway would? The, this group have as we draft ordinance, an interim ordinance? To, to say what the DRB would look at, or would we be picking things from, you know, standard site plan review and so forth?
Could we make sort of a. You know, special tract or, you know, special component of conditional use for being for this specific use? I. I don't think so. My gut says probably not. But we could always, you know, if we find that the conditional use review. Process is lacking granularity or, um, you know, misses something obvious, we can always expand on that list.
Yeah, Christian?
Character of the neighborhood is important.
Yeah, yeah. Christian?
In my, like, limited Googling, I was not able to find any examples in Vermont, at least, of towns using the DRB for. The types of things that community character and the ones who are doing it that I could tell were doing it for fire safety, capacity. Water, like, but nothing to do with, like. Quality of the neighborhood, how, whether neighbors are gonna give it the yes or no, if I'm set, to me, that's like a. Slippery slope that just, I don't know, it just opens up more questions than is needed.
Well, I mean, those. That type of review, review, conditional use review applies to any use that's conditional. So I think what you're finding is regulations in terms of short term rentals. Um, but, you know, generally speaking, conditional use review. Does contain the notion of, you know. Are there any possible bad outcomes in the neighborhood, is this neighborhood, is the use. In character with the neighborhood, does it comply with the town plan? And those sort of like general conditional use review policies are pretty standard. So, um.
If we had just to think about the other side of it, if it was an allowed use. Permitted use, uh, or some category of this we're talking about. Cause I do, the point, the the big problem that's sort of, we gotta do something, is something's happening in town that. Is not allowed, and the way things are drawn up, if it's not allowed, it shouldn't happen, and it is, so we need to do something. We could, to to the one extreme, simply say, here's a definition of short term rental, da da da. It is an allowed use in everywhere in town. Now. That still means. That they go to you, Stephen, like you said, it's a, it's a building permit equivalent, it's an allowed use. And they come to you. To get a permit. Doesn't go to the DRB, but you go and you say, well, here are the conditions, you need to. Here, sign up on the registry, you need to, here, give me your fire certificate and show me the occupants. And what's your contact information for the property manager, so.
Right.
Independent of whether it's you doing that or the DRB doing that. We can put those. Uh. Regulations, those requirements in place, right?
Yeah, yeah, in essence, I I wouldn't issue either a building permit. Or a certificate of occupancy if all of these requirements that I've laid out weren't met. If they couldn't demonstrate that they've met all these requirements, then I would either deny the permit. Or, you know, at the time. That they were wanting to open and, you know, make use of it. I wouldn't supply them a certificate of occupancy until that. I wouldn't supply them a certificate of occupancy until that requirement was met. So we have, we have ways to hold people to these requirements, even in a by right. Admissible permissible circumstance. The DRB, the, you know, conditional use review just allows for some additional scrutiny and uh pu- public testimony. You know, so if you have, you know, twelve neighbors showing up saying that, you know. They absolutely don't want that. In, you know, in their neighborhood, the DRB would take that testimony into consideration.
Is that, is that, it's a conditional use or is that a?
If it's a conditional use. Otherwise.
I think that's a, oh, a useful distinction, if we took the starting point that said, we've got to make. Some statement about this, we, we can't leave it stated, or we're just letting people. Do something illegal without speaking to it, so we're gonna do something. And we're gonna craft the right sensible list of uh requirements. Um, so I think we've got a clear question on the table, which is. Is the, is the DRB? Process that is required of a conditional use. Uh, necessary for any of the use cases we're talking about, does this group think? That process is valuable in certain cases? It sounds like Christian's saying, no, he doesn't think so. What do other people think?
I think that when, when there's distinctions, like for instance, just in the first. In a, um, where there's a distinction between short or old, uh, church, church STR is owned by, uh. Uh, um, owner occupied and non-owner, uh, non-owner occupied, I think that's an important, that's like one of the most important distinctions. That there is because i- if not only. First, you know, the, the larger social thing that I was concerned about was, was price rising and stuff, but. The way they're gonna behave too, because someone who's living with the people that are renting. Um, you know, owner occupied thing, I've got, the, the whole situation's gonna probably have a very different complexion than. One where there is the person who owns and the person who's, that is to say, the person that's responsible. Um, is not living in the property, um, is, is remote somewhere. Um, and is not able to respond, let's say, for instance, able to instantly respond to a problem, the owner occupied place. You know, most people will, will know they're living with the neighbors that, you know, they'll, they'll be on, people be on the phone as soon as there's a problem. The other people, if they deal with somebody out of Las Vegas. You know, when, when will that person actually take care of the problem? So there should be a bit of a differentiation in that divi- that division. I, I think, I think, and so I think I, this is, this is, that's like perfect now, so. As a lawyer, think it's, it's a good idea that it doesn't run with the land, I, I think you gotta make these things clear too, because when you don't make things clear. The courts, you can't trust the courts to do the right thing. And since these are all things that affect people in a very immediate sense, I would, I would make sure that. Every single I you can cross and T you can dot should be done so because um. When the guy from Las Vegas comes with an expensive lawyer to fight things, fight the way, fight it. You want it all, you know, non discriminatory, you want it all, you want everything to be as perfect as possible, so that. The court can't sink its teeth into it and, and tell us we, we gotta throw out, throw out all our part of what we've got here.
Yeah.
And they will.
Yeah.
Because, you know, because we, we, in a way, we're fighting, we're dealing with private stuff versus business. Private issues versus business issues and business right now is. You know, I, I.
Yeah, I guess the thing that I'm struggling with now is as we, as we talk through this and if we just say to ourselves. Okay, we're gonna put a list of requirements. And they may be different by, by use case, so for the, for the owner occupied STR. We may have a, a set of requirements and for the uh non-owner occupied, we may have a slightly different one. Um, so. That exercise of, of defining use cases and putting sensible regulations to them. I think is, is a clear useful activity. The distinction I'm trying to work on is just, can the zoning administrator, planning director? Manage the process? Or are there things we can envision that need the DRB? Uh, as a, to your point, Stephen, uh, you can take public comment. You can weigh it, um, you can say no. So that's, that's what I'm trying to get at here, do, is any of this conditional pulling in the DRB? Vince?
Uh, yeah, I think I'm kind of on the same page too, going back and forth between involving the DRB or making it cut and dry. Because, well, I know we've talked about it in the past, we do wanna make the job for the DRB easier, and it seems like one of the. I guess main driving forces of including that would be to get public comment. For the amount of neighbors that would either agree with it or disagree with it, but it also, at what point? Are there enough neighbors that are upset that it counts? Like if one neighbor says no, are they always gonna say no? Do you have to wait until there's? Like in Stephen's example, twelve neighbors, like that makes it obvious that everyone dislikes it, but it kind of seems just a bit. Fuzzy to me, and I can also see the benefits of just having the specific. Uh, requirements and just following that letter of law. The other thing too is that their situation could change too, and then that could kind of make things a little different. If they're, tell the DRB they're only gonna do it during. Uh, homecoming weekend or some, or graduation, and then they end up doing it for five months out of the year, how does that kind of reflect on? Uh, you know, the neighbors that would either come along with it or, or opposed it, so it just seems, I, I'm not. Too sure which way I'm leaning, cause I, I do see the, the value of getting the public comment, but. Yeah, I haven't quite figured it out.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, Vince, to your point about, um. You know, their testimony that they'll only do it, say, a weekend and then, um, you know, it turns out they're doing it every weekend. If the DRB noted that in, you know, their letter of decision as a condition, then that's an enforceable violation. I, I'm, I'm, you know, my take is, I, I, I would just wanna avoid having the DRB doing silly things. Yeah, I don't, I don't think for the, for the most part, owner occupied. The use of their own property, a portion of it, to, or the entirety for, you know, some period of time. Um, you know, that's, I, I don't think that's a, a use that requires greater scrutiny. Beyond, and if they comply with all of this or regulations that we've set out, then I think. There's no way, no need to get the DRB involved. In a circumstance where. You know, it's more difficult for them to comply, um, because the owners, it's not the owner's primary residence. The, you know, I think the DR, some extra scrutiny is warranted, but really only in that case.
To that, Stephen, can you give, uh, I, I'm still not grasping. The example of the second, where you just ended there, so like I'm with Ernie that like something. Cut or dry, if you have a homestead declaration, it's your primary residence, you're allowed to do it as a.
Yeah.
Short term rental, it's as clear as day, it's like we have permitted use, we can check the homestead declaration, easy to do, once you start going. Into the non-owner occupied, you go down a slippery slope, to me, where it's just like. It's, and, and I haven't heard it from you or anybody, I haven't heard a valid use case of like. Wh- what, like, why would that, why would, like, give me an example of when we would want to entertain that, someone's renting in a. A house and then they also wanna turn around, I'm sure that breaks their own rental, like where is that an issue? Outside of investor owned properties or vacation homes or, which is to Ernie's point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I was gonna say, you're gonna be asked, that one of the things that we have to be aware, wary of is. When you take two things that look alike and separate them. In the courts, they will, they, you can end up with a discrimination kind of issue going on. And um, that's something that has to be thought about, that's why. The owner occupied versus not owner occupied, that's a relatively clear division, because. There's a lot of difference between those two, it's, it's not just simply that, those two facts. It's that the behavior of, of the whole situation is very different when there's, like I said, owner occupied, there's. Somebody who's responsible right there on the scene.
Ernie, Ernie, I agree, I, I, my point was, I don't, I don't think we should, so I would just leave it at the owner occupied and then just. Make it a not allowed use for non-owner occupied, I wouldn't even do it under conditional use, I'd just say it's.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that would become a discrimination issue somehow.
Yeah.
Every other town, I mean, every major city that's dumb, it limits Airbnbs, if you go to rent an Airbnb in a major Burlington, like. Vermont, for example, it's owner occupied, there is no second conditional use that I'm aware of, it's like the limiting, the most straightforward thing is if you own it. You can do what you want, if you don't own it, then it prevents, or if you occupied, if you don't live there, then you, it prevents the investment income.
It's, it's, it's a matter of time before those, that, that, those regulations will be attacked in court.
I think there's been a case already.
I mean, all the major city ones definitely have, I mean.
Yeah.
Airbnb lost millions on.
I, 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 I think they upheld the um city's position.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, uh, I, it seems like we've lost yawn.
Yeah.
Ready to go back in there?
Yeah.
Oh, you're muted Vince, if you're talking.
I still can't speak freely, I was trying to speak freely without anyone recognizing me and I was still muted. Um, I was just curious if there was any examples. If there was any examples of a, a maximum amount of time that, that we could like cap, how many days they rented out to? Cause that can kind of naturally, if that does become a legal problem of uh investor owned versus uh. Uh, primary residence, if, if, you know, you can make it like, uh. Uh, financially unable to be able to, to sustain it as an investor property if we cap how many. Days it's, it's available, and I don't know if that's like a nightmare of trying to keep track of all that information or. Just, uh, if, if anyone's gone down that road, I'm worried about that.
Yeah, I, you know, I think, the, the way I'm sort of envisioning this going is we would. Come up with an interim bylaw, which would run for, you know, two or two years or less. And we would sort of get a sense of what gets permitted and what types of permits we have. And at, you know, sort of near the end of that, we could take a decision. Of either doing this fully through zone land use regulations or by creating an ordinance. And to Christian's point earlier, if we had an ordinance, then we could open a registry. To, you know, to track the, you know, or track the usage. You know, know exactly who, what, money, where, which I don't think we can really do through zoning regulations. Um, but we'll have a choice, we could, there's certainly municipalities that have adopted, you know, an ordinance, a townwide ordinance that. Regulates short term rentals, um, and there are those that do it in, in bylaw, so, um. There's, there's a number of different, you know, sort of outcomes here. But I, you know, I think at, in, in, you know, ways to regulate this, but you know, sort of starting. At the outset, you know, with just a set of interim bylaws. You know, we, we should just decide. I guess I'm hearing decide whether we're going to prohibit. Non-owner occupied. Short term rentals. Maybe that's the question we have to answer.
I didn't get a sense from last meeting or this one that anyone, or I can't really imagine a lot of people in town that would be. Uh, in favor of allowing uh investor owned rentals. Uh, the only thing I can think of would be maybe if someone actually lived in town and then had to move away for some reason. And then rent that out, but as far as someone coming in from out of state and. Purchasing something with the intent, I don't think anyone in town, like, I think there'd be a very low percentage of people in town that would be.
Yeah.
In favor of that.
I, I guess I'm, I'm not clear if there's a, a difference between, uh, I mean, you. If the investor, sorry, if the owner is not present. And vacates, uh, the property, to rent their whole property out.
Yeah.
I mean, certainly the fourteen days that are in there at the beginning, uh, that, that certainly seems to allow for that, but, uh. Um, I mean, that's still, I mean, does. If we're concerned about the owner being there, they're not there for the, you know, the, the upcoming weekend or whatever.
Yeah, I, I don't.
I don't know that it's a big issue, I mean, it's not a chronic thing, but, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to, you know, insist that the owner be onsite.
Yeah.
Um.
Yes, well, well, yeah, they, they, I guess you.
Yeah.
You're gonna have that situation where they're not.
Yeah.
Even if they, if it wasn't owner occupied, uh, like ADU or something like, yeah.
Yeah.
We got a lot decided while you were gone.
Yeah, I'm glad.
A jury's.
No, we're still in a courtroom. Still in a courtroom, so that's, I don't know what happened, I could blame it on the rain or something, but I had to reboot the computer, but the. The phone had internet, the computer did not.
Non-owner occupied.
Yeah.
Yeah. Christian raised a question if. Um, we should just outright prohibit non-owner occupied short term rentals. Like other municipalities have done.
So can I ask, I mean, I'm not, it's a good question, um. Do we have a clear enough definition? So you would take the primary residence statement, so if somebody. Lived on that lot a hundred and eighty-four days a year, they called it their primary residence for tax purposes. That makes it owner occupied, even if they're hanging out in Florida for five months. They own there, they care about it, they know their neighbors, whatever the arguments are, um.
They pay taxes in.
They pay taxes, yeah. So if we simply said. That definition can't do it in Norwich, well, is that? So to Ernie's point, we get sued for that?
So my argument when you were going is, I, from what I could, this seems to be the way most municipalities in bigger areas have gone, and I think it's because it. Is more black and white.
Mm-hmm.
Than going to DRB and then the DRB deciding whether three out of five neighbors in this neighborhood like it or not. And like that, I think sets you up more into a court battle than. Like this is pretty black or white, yes or no?
Yeah.
Burlington, Vermont does it, I mean, I know that for a fact.
Yeah.
One occupied.
And, you know. We also can, you know. Start with a certain set, run it out as an interim bylaw, and then if we. You know, if we can let that expire, we can update our land use regulations. We could create a separate ordinance. To manage these, so we could have a registry, so there's, you know, there's, there's a lot of things we could, we could, a lot of paths we can take.
So if, if we just start with the fact that it's definitely sensible to. Explicitly talk about these uses, we have to, you know, we say, yes, we are going, and we're gonna have a list of. Regulations and conditions that are required for these uses. I mean, that, so whichever way we go in terms of who gets to decide. Whether they're categorically prohibited, whether Stephen gets designed because they're allowed. Or whether the DRB's involved in deciding, we want that. List, we have, it's, we have a starting point with what's written up here about fire and parking and. Site, can you just, quick question, Stephen, could, could you take into account the character of the neighborhood? And as part of an allowed use evaluation?
Probably not. Unless it was. Uh, you're clearly defined in the land use regulations, you know, something I, I could point to.
Yeah, yeah. So that aside, I mean, I do think we definitely want. Clear definitions of these uses. We are going to. Want to do an interim, I think, an interim zoning regulation. To, to speak to these uses, because to be resp- a resp- To to speak to these uses, because to be resp- a responsible planning commission. We need to do that because.
Yeah.
It's clearly, I mean, like I said, but at the last meeting, it went from seven percent investor owned properties in Vermont to. Thirty one percent investor owned.
Yeah.
In five years. So we're not being responsible if we don't address these uses.
And I guess the question is, do we wanna be bold as well and just say? If you own the property, yes, you can, you can rent this out through these systems. If you don't, you can't.
Um, I would just, I don't, I think that's. I think if people, if we did a little bit of digging, I think you'd find that is more the the way most larger, most places have gone as as them. Path force limiting Airbnb or V R B O or whatever it is.
Mm hmm. And, you know.
I don't, you know. What do people think? Is anybody really? Uh, really against that idea of saying we have, of all the uses we'll define. Um, get good definitions and good, if if we had a good set of. Conditions and regulations, here's how you have to behave, that that we would say, I'll say, no, it is not. A permitted or conditional use in. At least certain parts of town or all of town. Non owner occupied short term round.
Since since we're gonna um, sort of do an interim, we're thinking of an interim. I, which I think is a good idea to find to to learn what actually works. Uh, I would, I would try to live not allow how the non owner occupied. Or either they, either they're heavily regulated or they're prohibited altogether, one of the two. Um, I I I. I I then try it out and see what happens.
Do do the interim, what what Stephen's trying to, he's calling bold. So dude, you can call bold. So do the, do it's interim, it is, it is a time window. Is it two years or three years, Stephen?
Two years. But two years.
So to a a time window and say, all right, in that time window. We're gonna lean towards the more conservative. Uh, rather than the more open, at least on that one specific slice. We do a registry of the other ones. We watch what's happening in the rest of the state and so forth. And then two years from now, we could say, oh, okay, that went a little too far. Let's let's open that up.
Yeah, yeah, that is, that's what I thought I was trying to say.
No, 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 you Doug, just confirm. Um, is anybody really wary of that as at least the an a a step to write up and. Put down, I mean, this, this is, the select board's got to approve it, the, you know, and so on. It's it's a, it's a proposal, not a decision. Is, are people comfortable with at least writing, writing that up so we can, we can look at it and other people can look at?
The, the other option is to position this as an ordinance, which the select board would. Um, establish. So we could, we could do the interim bylaw or set it up as ordinance.
Now, what's, what's the pro, what's the pro of doing an ordinance rather than interim?
The, I think the ordinance would allow for more sort of registry process. So we could, we could set, we could officially establish a Norwich short term rental registry. Where, you know, they have to come to the town clerk and, you know, regale, you know, on an annual basis, um. Register the. I I think it's a bit premature to do that.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is this is, this to me. Is our bailiwick. The it, this should be included in a town Pam plan process. It should be.
Yeah.
In front of people who are thinking about housing issues and land use issues. And, um, you know, whether or not you have like a noise ordinance. Uh, which is in our zoning regs actually, but you know. To me, I would rather keep this as a, as a zoning issue about allowable and conditional use questions. That's appropriate, but is anybody else? What do you think about doing it as an ordinance?
I I agree with Yon on this right now, for the short term, especially in the short term. Again, that's something else we can turn it into an ordinance or ordinance can handle other aspects that that are not appropriate. To it being into to the uh, land use aspect of it.
Okay. Vince? You're muted.
With the interim bylaw, we still have some sort of uh. Maybe not an official registry, but still have information on on like the the data of how many that there are out there, like what would the the um. I I guess from what I've read, it seemed like there was gonna be registry, so we.
Right.
Have that opportunity with the interim bylaw.
Um. I mean, we would have, obviously have a record of all of the permits that were issued. Um. But this is sort of, you know, registries, as I've seen in, you know, other towns. You know, you have to register with the town clerk. I I can't. I don't think the a land use regulation can um. Necessarily require that. I think if we're gonna have. Uh, if we have the need and want to run, you know, a registry program. I think that has to happen outside of, th- those requirements has to have to have happen outside of the the bylaws.
So can we, in the interest of time, I would just ask. Um.
Cause it it requires the collection of fees sometimes even.
Right. Which, I mean, I think that's, it's a money making method, but you're not, you're not gonna influence land use policy by whether somebody's gotta pay a hundred bucks to do short term rentals. That, you know, that to me seems, you know, if if we're trying to influence what happens.
Yeah, but I don't think we can set fees. I think the select board sets permanent registration.
So can we for tonight put it as, um, we wanna see this spelled out? So, uh, you know, clean definitions, focus, you know, with. Uh, I'd like a better definition of kind of the owner occupied and how that relates to primary residence and. Uh, that definition, but then, um, allowed use. In all districts with these and then really list in detail the the regulations and the conditions. Some of them are in there now, clean those up and then the statement that this definition of owner occupied. Short term, not owner occupied short term rental is not an allowed use. And let's just write that all up uh in one packet and and put it on the agenda for next meeting.
So owner occupied as defined in eighteen V S A section forty three oh one.
No. No.
Cause that's what one, that's why I was saying that.
Well, that, that's. There's. That statute defines what a short term rental is.
Mm hmm.
But owner occupancy is something I just.
Yeah, we're talking primary residence sort of question where. It is, it is somebody's.
There, there might be a legal definition of owner occupied. This is not one, I mean, it didn't come from the statutes um directly. But yeah, okay, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with. You know, the background I've done on the rental requirements. I think in my review. These pretty much capture everything that every other town is doing. Um.
So if I just ask everybody then to, cause I think it's the category of definitions. Um, conditions or kind of rules, best practices that we're requiring. Um, if people could look carefully at those as they're in there. And ask, ask for clarification, suggest clarification, suggest, you know, let's get those two lists. To to a next step of refinement. And then there's one policy statement or the the policy statement is. Everything but non owner occupied short term rentals are allowed. Non owner occupied short term rentals are not allowed. That's the policy statement.
Yeah. I can also, um. Put together what the interim bylaw might look like. I'm sort of envisioning it as a standalone regulatory document, so we'll have to have sort of article one. Title enactment severability clauses, um. Spelling out the sort of short term nature. So I can, I can put these regulations into or these requirements as written. Into that framework, so everybody has a sense of what that's gonna look like when we take it to the select board.
Yeah, I mean, I I hear you. I guess at this point, I'd rather see it, I'd rather see it cleaner and simpler. Rather than kind of more realistic and embedded in legal ease at this stage. Just, just one more step. Of.
Okay.
Definitions, conditions and a policy statement, and then that's all the content. And yes, we can wrap it up in the, in the right wrapper after that.
Okay.
All right. Are people comfortable with that for the night? All right.
For the night.
Can we, exactly, can we, so we don't, we can't do July eighth minutes because we need Mary to get a quorum of people who were there?
Yeah.
Okay. How about September thirtieth? Can I have a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
All right. I had one comment, um, Vince, which was at the bottom of page one where it says for the. The interim ordinance, a single hearing is required. It's the select board that holds that single hearing, not the P C.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Any, any other comments on the minutes for September thirty? All right, all those in favor, well, I need a motion. For those minutes.
Uh, didn't Christians do that?
Oh, yeah, okay, second, got it. All those in favor minutes, September thirty? All right. Thank you, everyone. Sorry I lost this five minutes there, or we would be on time. But you literally. Got things settled.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, number second. And we're gonna have to hold on to it anyway. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Take care.
Great, thanks.
Thanks.